Good evening. Welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2019. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "Oh, Canada."
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons come and with glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to an alumni of our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. I would look for a motion to adopt the set of previous council meeting minutes. Counselor Thiessen?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held Monday, April 8th, 2019 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Are there any errors or omissions that we need to address in that set of minutes before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so if there were none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that we accept the agendas presented with the addition of item 8.2, appointment to IDP-ICF negotiating committees.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Any discussion or debate on the agenda with that amendment? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Has everybody's vote entered? Thank you. That motion carries, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, and we always appreciate it when people let us know ahead of time that they're coming, but it's not required. We did have two delegations this evening, and the first was with respect to Mighty Peace Day. I see that Mr. Glenn is here, and are you joined by Mr. Renier? Gentlemen, if you'd come down, maybe just introduce yourselves for our recording secretary and the folks watching at home. You may have to point those microphones that are headed more towards your rowf, but other than that, welcome.
Well, thank you. So, I think I know most of you, but my name is Randy Glenn, and I'm here representing the Mighty Peace Youth Society.
I am Ron Renier. I'm the co-chair with Randy from Mighty Peace Youth Society.
It's kind of strange not being here on an engineering-type issue or anything, but anyways. So, Ron and I are the co-chairs of the Mighty Peace Youth Society. We're here to tell you a little bit about some of the things that we do and to ask for a little bit of financial support. So, we are dedicated to engaging the youth in our area by inspiring them to follow their passion through supporting their involvement and positive contributions to local, national, and global issues. We're devoted to encouraging youth to play an active role in society by nurturing their desire to create change. We do this by hosting a number of events, and I've seen lots of council members and the mayor at these events, so forgive us if we're telling you something you already know. But the youth conference, we've hosted a couple of one-day youth conferences for youth in the region. The conferences had sessions that promote and discuss leadership, arts, social action, social media, personality types, and relevant issues such as depression and anxiety. The conferences are a small event. We've reached about 300 students so far. At our first conference, the youth attended a songwriting session with one of the band members from Her Brothers that resulted in a song written specifically for Mighty Peace Day called "Together We Stand." School tours. We've hosted a couple of school engagement tours where we bring a band in and tour the schools in the region. They have assemblies to bring all the kids into the gym, and the band plays a few songs and then has a message usually around leadership or change resulting from action. And the school tours reach a larger audience, reaching over 3,000 youths to date probably. And then we have the Mighty Peace Day, which is kind of our crown jewel. This is a day of inspiration and entertainment modeled after the "We Day" event. It's coming up in two weeks, on May 7th already. We bring a group of world-class speakers and bands to Grand Prairie and along with some local talent provide a high-energy impactful day for approximately 3,000 youth from the region. Speakers have included Olympic athletes, a child soldier, Rob Nash, who confronts teen suicide, a lady who was born in a refugee camp, other speakers that have addressed bullying, living with HIV, autism, and overcoming adversity. And we have a crowd favorite that's coming back again this year, Spencer West, who despite having no legs, lives a full life with a wife, kids, career, everything, and he managed to climb Mount Kilmanjaro, again, on his hands. Spencer's a crowd favorite, and he's been to every Mighty Peace Day event so far, and we're happy that he's coming back again this year. In terms of operations, we've been holding Mighty Peace Day on a two-year cycle. In the off-years, we're hosting the school tour and the conference, and our goal is to inspire the youth with the day and then keep the momentum going with the conference and the school tours. Personally, I was involved in the first Mighty Peace Day, but not in a very significant role. I was just the guy running the teleprompter. And, but the day hooked me. I knew that I was going to be involved in this as long as it was around. The energy and the impact of the day is incredible. So, a couple, at the last event, Ron and I co-chaired the business side of the organization of the day, so we learned a lot about what it goes on to put the day together. And then after the last event, the board kind of changed on us, and so Ron and I kind of stepped up and became the co-chairs of the youth society to keep this thing going. And, but with the change, we lost a little bit of organizational memory. It's kind of why we're here today now, two weeks before the event instead of last year. It's part of your budget cycle. We have a two-year operating budget of about $240,000. We don't charge for attendance at any event. Nobody pays for anything. We're 100% community-funded. The operating budget includes about $180,000 for the Mighty Peace Day event itself and $60,000 for the remaining events and our small operating costs. With the exception of legal fees, accounting fees, and the maintenance on our website, 100% of the money raised is used to support the youth in our community. Events require more than 1,000 hours collectively to organize and host from volunteers. Fundraising's been a bit of a challenge this year, a bit more than in the past. That being said, we have had some pretty fantastic support. Kev's Kids has come on board as the title sponsor. In 2018, 2019, over 30 local businesses have supported us with funding. Rotary House, or Rotary House, the Rotary Clubs have supported us. The county has given us $10,000, and we've applied for funding from the MD of Greenview as well. Our area reach is quite large. The kids come from high-level, grand cash. We've had kids from Conklin, which is pretty close to Fort McMurray, so it's really open to anybody who chooses to get here, and again, at no cost to the kids. So, we weren't really aware of the process for funding through the city, unfortunately. So, earlier this year, I filled out the paperwork and applied for funding in the amount of $20,000, which represents essentially a gift-in-kind for the cost of hosting the event at Revolution Place. The venue itself, the rent is about $15,000, and then guest services cost another $5,000, approximately. So, I don't think I applied to the right place, but administration was great, and they were able to grant us $2,000 of funding, which we're very supportive of, or we're very grateful for the support. But we really wanted to come tonight to see if there's any way we can support the gift-in-kind for the event, the venue. And that's why we're here, so we would be happy to answer any questions that you would care to ask of us, and hopefully, we'd like to see you all at the event on May 7th.
Thanks very much, Mr. Glenn, for the presentation. Appreciate that you didn't have any engineering drawings to go over or ESP information, and you still did really, really well.
Thank you.
Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming in. I'm not sure where I'll land in terms of supporting this request, but I definitely support the event itself. I've seen kids that have gone through it that I've worked with. It's been good for them, and right now, my plan is to be volunteering in your parking lot for that day, so.
Wonderful. Excellent.
That's your work, and I definitely do support the event, even though I don't know what I'll do today. Two questions for you. One is, you're going to have about 3,000 students. About how many of those are city residents? Do you have any idea?
Registration isn't complete yet. We haven't pulled that out. We have for previous years. We haven't pulled it out yet. We're having a meeting tomorrow night, so we'll know by the end of the week where we're at currently for our registration and what percentage of that is in the city. Usually, a large percentage of it is in the city. Busing is much more convenient to get to and from the event if you're in the city. So, a large.
More than half.
Yeah.
And then, just tell me, what happens if you get a note tonight? What's that mean to this event for these kids?
We fund on a two-year cycle, so to get all our events in place. Right now, we probably have enough funding to pull the day off, and that's it. So, we, that means next year or the remainder, we want to have another youth conference in the fall, so we're, we are right on the edge of funding.
When we're doing our funding, we stopped when Randy and I took over looking at funding Mighty Peace Day, and instead, we try to fund the Mighty Peace Youth Society, which is more than the day. The day is great to get youth excited, inspired, and engaged, but really, we want to get them into the community, so just as important as the event or the follow-ups of the youth symposium and the school engagement tour to keep the kids engaged on the off-year. So, we're really looking at funding the society overall as opposed to just that one day.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Gentlemen, the way our agenda works, we have our delegation business towards the end of the agenda. You're more than welcome to stick around. It's not a particularly long agenda this evening, or administration can contact you afterwards to follow up and let you know what council decided and what direction we took. And thanks very much for your presentation this evening.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Okay. We did have another delegation that let us know that they wish to make a presentation to council, and that was Mr. Kadek and Mr. Hader with respect to the 2019 sidewalk program. Gentlemen, if you'd like to come forward. You did have some information, I think, that you were going to present to council. I'm not sure if that's been circulated to all members of council. Just, okay, yeah. So, that's fine. Have a seat, introduce yourselves, and you've kind of seen the process go once. Give you an opportunity to sort of make a presentation to council, and then there'll be an opportunity for questions from council. And they're fairly sensitive mics. They should be able to pick you up. Welcome.
Well, thank you. So, what I want to talk about today was, we got a mail or a letter in the mail talking about our sidewalk being taken away. So, normally, to most people, this wouldn't be an issue. If they didn't have a sidewalk, they're not really concerned about it. We've had the sidewalk for 10, 15 years, ever since we lived there. All the kids on the street use it. Patrons use it. The fact that was given from city administration was that the fact that it doesn't go all the way around, so the sidewalk doesn't serve a purpose. To the people that live on that street, they would disagree. 90% of the residents on that side of the street signed the petition saying they would like the city not to do it, and 3/4 of the residents on the opposite side of the street asked the same thing. And they knew when we went around that they knew full well that it wasn't their sidewalk they were losing, that it was the other one. I don't have any concrete facts here to present to you why the value of the sidewalk is so important, just the fact that us residents that live there and have our kids there, our families there. There was one gentleman who has a prosthetic leg, that lost a part of his leg last year. He wasn't able to be here today. He was, you know, Easter weekend, he was away with family in Edmonton, and he's pretty sore. Now, granted, you know, I don't know if that would sway the decision or not. I would hope not. But the fact is, is, the reason I'm here is, the sidewalk is kind of the part of our community there. And when I talked to the city administration, I'll be honest, second conversation did not go very well. It was, you know, both back and forth, but to be honest, you know, having a new sidewalk isn't, is really irrelevant. Both residents on both sides of the street would prefer that the sidewalk on both sides of the street remain. They're not concerned that it gets wider, as I was told. You're getting a new, better sidewalk. Both residents would prefer the sidewalks stay there, for our kids and the people that use them. I was told my kids can cross the street and use the other side. Well, that's fine, but, you know, traffic is by law enforcement's not sitting there to manage the traffic. We're parents. We care about our kids. We care about our kids staying on the sidewalk. That's what we teach them is, stay on the sidewalk. Don't leave the sidewalk, you know? Half of you here, or most of you are parents. You understand that. I've still got young children. Don't cross the sidewalk. So, I just, I don't know how else more to describe this to you, the value of a sidewalk. Like, and I've asked, sorry, I'll clean it, I'll finish it off here, but I've asked everybody that I have met, whether it was at the home show or through my business and everything else, what am I missing? And everybody's come, well, as dumbfounded as I am as to why the need to take the sidewalk away. You could just, if you really don't want to repair it, or if it's a cost issue, I hear we're standardizing the city for sidewalks. For what? To take it away from the children and the people that use it? That, you know, essentially pay for part of it with our taxes. I don't, I don't know how else to say it, but when we look at our kids, I've had this discussion with my wife about the value, it's priceless. And people we talk to, like, they say, my grandkids use it, my kids use it, you know, we use it. I don't know how else to describe that to you. To be personally or perfectly honest, I think the taking it away is absolutely ridiculous. I really do. You know, a lot of the stuff I do is for kids and with, you know, in the community with baseball and all kinds of other things. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
I'm not sure if you have the map that you received. It might be helpful. I know.
I do. Sorry.
No, no, that's okay. And so, maybe that'll just help orient members of council. And so, if you, maybe you want.
So, as you can see, the red is the sidewalk being taken away. So, the part that I'm talking about, the sidewalk doesn't extend all the way around, so if you look at 96th Street and 97th, that's where it stops because you have the grass easement that goes in between the buildings on both sides of the block, and then the sidewalk continues on 82nd Ave on both sides of the street. So, like, I don't know, it doesn't look like much, but that sidewalk is invaluable to the people that use it. For somebody that doesn't live on that block, I couldn't express to you the value of it because you're not there. You're not there every day seeing it used, using it yourself and having your family use it.
Just kidding. Not everybody else has the benefit of the documentation. The council would see it afterwards, absolutely. Do you maybe just want to highlight what it was that you asked people to sign? What they actually, what the question was that they were asked to?
So, the question was there. I was there for most of the signatures. The people they were explained to of what it was, if they were on the opposite side of the street, they were explained that it wasn't their sidewalk. They expressed it didn't make sense. They didn't understand why it couldn't be just left. And, to be honest, some expressed issue with it being an inconvenience as well. And these are the people we could get a hold of. Not everybody is home all the time. We weren't able to go back around. That's why I said it was, you know, we're looking at 90% and 3/4 on the other side of the residents. And of course, there was two residents that said it wasn't, it had nothing to do with them, so.
Any questions for the delegation? Or, Mr. Hader, did you care to?
My name is Colin Hader. I live on that street, and like Chris said, we value that sidewalk very much. As a matter of fact, there's five or six that live on our side of the street. We're the only ones that keep our sidewalk clean in the winter. The other side, nobody cleans literally on the other side. So, if that's going to be the problem, if that problem's going to stay, where are we going to walk? Where are we going to walk?
Thanks very much, gentlemen, for the presentation.
And that's, that's a concern that I have. I've lived there now for almost 16 years, and that sidewalk's been very, very valuable to me.
Gentlemen, I'll see if there's any council members that have any questions for you. Counselor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Thanks for coming in, chatting with us. I appreciate that. I haven't talked to our city engineers yet, so I don't, this is the first conversation I'm having about it, but my understanding of wider sidewalks is largely for the sake of people in wheelchairs, which is exciting, which is important to me, having enough width for that. So, I'm kind of curious, it's, again, not having talked to the engineers, it strikes me that if we want to get that minimum width sidewalk and keep it on your side, the options would likely be to either narrow the road or to take some, take some land for properties to have more space for road plus sidewalk. So, if we wanted to make sure that we maintain that minimum width for wheelchairs, is there an option there that would be preferable to you or?
To give up part of my land?
Have a narrower road?
If you want it to look like countryside south and north, everybody's driven through there. They know how narrow it is and how dangerous it is. It's more dangerous for kids. You can do max 20 through those areas because you're so worried about somebody darting out from the cars, and in the winter, it's 10 times worse. So, the potential for, possibility for someone that would be used, like a wheelchair could fit down the sidewalk as it is. I, I understand what you're saying, that there are wheelchairs that are very wide to accommodate the size of the person. I'm a big guy. I might need a wider wheelchair, but at what expense? For all the children and all the people that use it as well, when the person in the wheelchair can still use the sidewalk effectively? I just, I'm, I see your point, but I see that a wheelchair still can access it. The gentleman we were speaking to that is unfortunately unable to be here, he used it quite well.
Yes. He's my next-door neighbor, and I'm ashamed to say, last winter, he was out there mornings doing sidewalk in the wheelchair quite comfortably.
But that was the only way he was able to, to get his exercise, was having that sidewalk. He wouldn't have been able to get across the street. Like, the sidewalk, like, serious, we can't, we can't articulate the value to it, to the sidewalk, to anybody here, because you don't live there. You don't see the value in it the same way we do. Like, I know your job as administration is to look at a wide variety of things, but a sidewalk is invaluable to us. We're not talking about a big expenditure. If you don't want to spend the money, then leave it. Like, we'll patch the thing up with cement, home hardware, Home Depot sells it. We just want to keep our sidewalk, to be plain and simple.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any other questions for the delegation? So, I don't see anybody else in the queue. You saw with the last delegation that was here, our, the way our agendas are set up, we deal with the delegation business towards the end. I can let you know that right now, just to save the suspense, the most likely thing that would happen would be council would ask administration to put this on to one of our committee agendas, so we could get some of the professionals in the room and ask some of the questions that we might not be, have the right people in the room to answer tonight. And that would mean that nothing would happen on this until council had an opportunity to do that, most likely. Okay? But we can certainly, you can either stick around and hear the discussion towards the end, or we can follow up to inform you what happened. Sure, absolutely.
So, I have talked to administration, a gentleman named Mark and Andrew Booth, and I asked them for solutions or another way. And I was told not, maybe council asking would maybe collectively be able to come up with another solution as to find some different way that we didn't have to lose our sidewalk. I know this is a city project that's been in play for what I told, 2007, what I was told about late this, half an hour ago. That's all I'm asking, is find a different solution that works. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Thanks for being here this evening. I don't know if there's anybody else this evening that wishes to come forward to present as a delegation, but I would make that reminder, as I said at the outset, this is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting, and it's just one of the ways to get a hold of city council, obviously. You can contact our administration to let us know ahead of time that you wish to present. You can be here on the evening and ask to present, but we're also available through email, through the Citizen Contact Center, in coffee shops, in your local grocery store, and all those are legitimate and viable ways to get things to your council member's attention. We'll move on into public hearings, and we'll start with item 6.1, the road closure bylaw for C, sorry, road closure bylaw, C-1404. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to Ms. O'Malley for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So, the city has a application from our Economic Development Office to do a road closure for a portion of road that you can see up on your screen. It's just this one here, and I did pull up another map for you that I thought would be useful, and that would be this one. So, it's this chunk right here. So, at some point in time, back in, I think, quite a while back, there was a transportation functional study, which had quite a bit of road widening along this section. It looks like we only got these two pieces and then never proceeded with that plan. So, now, we have this application before us, and it was circulated and put through all the hoops that are required for road closure bylaw, and there were no concerns expressed, and this land is no longer needed. Therefore, it is recommended that council give first reading to the bylaw, second reading, have third reading, and also give third reading.
Thanks very much, Ms. O'Malley. Any questions for administration at this point? I don't see anybody in the queue. Then we will move on to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Was there anybody here this evening that wished to make a presentation with respect to this road closure bylaw? I will ask again if there's anybody that wished to make a presentation, and I'll ask one third time. I don't see anybody rushing the stage, as it were. And so, I will just ask council one last time if you have any questions for administration before we close the public hearing. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1404 being a road closure bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. That's a motion for first reading. We'll have no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor. Given, I'd move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1404.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in. I will call for the vote on second reading then. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor. Given, I'd move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1404 at this meeting.
Thanks very much for the emphasis. This is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening in order for us to carry on and complete this issue with third reading. This motion must pass unanimously. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, then third and final reading would come back at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does pass unanimously. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor. Given, I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1404 being a road closure bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. One last opportunity, counsel. If there was anybody with a deep desire for discussion or debate on this pretty obvious road closure bylaw? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And that motion carries. Uh, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Thanks, Ms. Tonley. Uh, well, that'll take us through unfinished business, which we had none, uh, and into reports, item eight point one, an amended schedule of council and committee meetings for two thousand and nineteen. Uh, Mr. Bork, are you going to take that one for us?
I am. Thank you, uh, Mayor Given. Uh, administration are considering all aspects of city operations, including how we present information and to council and how they make their decisions. Over the past year, council have supported the delegation of authority on a number of matters, uh, which are more appropriate under a governance model, uh, to be a delegate to technical experts. Uh, the commitment, uh, this, also the commitment of this council to focus on strategic priorities and setting the strategic, strategic direction on the organization has caused administration to consider how we use council and administration's time in, uh, and to the most and highest value. Uh, so today, we're, uh, we're introducing a proposal to amend the uh, council committee's schedule and revise start time to council meetings. We believe both measures will improve the flow of decision-making for council while ensuring public transparency and continued opportunities for public involvement. Uh, this is a proposal to run this as a trial until the next organizational meeting in October. And the key components are that the three standing committees would be scheduled uh, to begin Tuesday mornings before, in the week prior to a regular council meet. Uh, we're not proposing any changes to uh, the chair or committee membership as aligned in the procedure bylaws. Uh, we're, um, as always, uh, all council members are, can participate in all committees, with the exception of voting and introducing motions. We would uh, start the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee at nine AM on Tuesday mornings under this scenario. Once that was complete, we would move into Corporate Services and the Community Living Committee. Uh, items that they should pass uh, from these new uh, consolidated committee structure would then be at the next council meeting six days later, uh, which we think is an improvement to our decision-making flow. We're also proposing a change to the council's start time with a two-segment meeting, which is used in some other municipalities. We would start proposing, we start at three PM on Mondays for council with uh, report uh, business from committees. Uh, there would be an opportunity of, for delegations under our proposal to uh, to speak to report business. But we would also then uh, start a second segment of the committee in the evening for those who attend work. They'd be able to come at six PM and talk to public hearings and also under delegation component. Um, as we've structured it here, council can pass an amended uh, calendar. There would be required changes to procedure bylaw, which we're proposing to do through a notice of motion, so that both these decisions were made at the next council for council to consider this over the next two weeks. Um, this would require a notice of motion from a member, member of council. That uh, is sums up the presentation. Um, one final additional uh, related piece of information is that at tomorrow's Corporate Services Committee, there will be two reports dealing with, uh, one dealing with uh, audio and visual capabilities of the council chambers, as well as uh, update on our document management, agenda management system that we use for council meetings. You'd have that information before you voted on this in two weeks.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Bork. Um, any questions for Mr. Bork on that item? Um, so just for clarity, um, out of this report, we're not looking for any motions at this time. It's the notice of motion later on in the agenda that would take that, the place and, and activate this process, I guess?
Uh, that's correct. We require a notice of motion to, for an amendment bylaws included in the package for revised start time to council and orders of the day. We'd also then propose that the calendar amendment be passed at the same time.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor Pressy in the queue.
Thank you. So I'm kind of looking for direct, for direction from Mayor Gi- for Mayor Given or from administration on what to do with this in terms of. I know that I'm supportive of the changes to committee. I've got some issues around public transparency and accessibility, as well as just the realities of being a part-time counselor and juggling other commitments with the change to Monday night council meetings, and I'm kind of curious what we want to do with this meeting in terms of, I'd hate to, next meeting, if I decide that I can't support these defeat both changes, if I try, set out to defeat one and I could get people to support me on that. So what do we want to do tonight?
I think, um, based on what I heard from administration and Mr. Bork, um, I think tonight we, uh, this report was introduced. Um, I think Counselor Thiessen has the information to be able to, to um, make the notice of motion, and that just gives council members enough time to hear the additional information about committee technology, uh, and then also maybe consider the changes that are being proposed over the next couple of weeks before we're actually asked to vote on them, um, at that subsequent council meeting. Uh, if there were amendments that we needed to propose, it would be at that time when that's voted on. Um, and I think we would have lots of time when they intervene in a couple of weeks if a council member wanted to try to, well, first off, really think about what, how they feel about the proposed changes. Um, but secondly, if you wanted to try to um, consider how to amend that, there'd be lots of time to figure out an appropriate procedural way to do that. So I think that two weeks will give you an opportunity. I don't think tonight. It's just the, uh, the process is a notice that there's an intention to change the procedure bylaw at our next meeting. Uh, council would have time to consider what they're going to do before we get there. Um, okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue on this item, and so am I correct then, there's no sort of motion arising from this report? Okay, uh, then we'll move into committee business and, oh, thank you, uh, eight point two. Thanks very much, Counselor Pressy. Uh, Counselor Pressy, you going to handle that piece of business for us?
Thank you, Mayor Given. As council is aware, we've begun intermunicipal collaboration framework negotiations with the county, and we also are going to be entering intermunicipal development plan coordination or negotiations with the county, and we need people appointed to do that. So right now, we've got Mayor Given, Counselors Clayton and Friesen appointed to our IDP committee, but we don't have an alternate for that appointed. Or sorry, we've got those three appointed to our ICF committee, but we don't have any alternate appointed, and we also need to appoint people to our IDP committee. So I would move that council appoint Counselor Minhas as an alternate to the ICF negotiating committee, and that council, council appoint Mayor Given, Counselor Clayton, Counselor Fareed Isen to the IDP committee, negotiating committee, with Counselor Minhas as the alternate to the IDP negotiating committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor Pressy. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now we can go into committee business and starting with nine point one, Community Living Committee, Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, I would move that uh, council uh, accept the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and nineteen as, as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions that we need to correct before we adopt them? Not seeing anybody ringing in, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen, anything to highlight for us?
Yeah, as always, uh, there's always stuff to highlight, Community Living. Uh, the first one and probably top of mind was, uh, we received a presentation from delegation of the Grand Prairie Downtown Association, Ms. Wendy Boss and Bosch. And uh, Mr. Grandberg came in uh, to talk about uh, new signage at the Welcome to Grand Prairie entrance feature to the downtown. Uh, so a motion was made by the mayor uh, to send it back to administration to bring a report identifying funding sources uh, of the city center sign renovation, including a recommendation of the process for implementing the project if approved by council. Uh, we did also receive updates from uh, from our director, as always. I'm only going to highlight one from there, uh, in the Transit Department, uh, that our automatic passenger counters have been installed on, on sixteen buses, uh, I think last week-ish. Uh, this is going to provide stop level data for both boarding and exiting passengers, which will enhance our ability to plan routes more effectively. Uh, and uh, we also passed, uh, and moved forward to council to our next council meeting, not this one, our Transit System Bylaw as well. Uh, and then we received an excellent presentation on our community housing needs assessment, and if any members of council or the community haven't taken a look at that yet, it's a pretty eye-opening uh, report that was presented to us by Mr. Reed DeRoche, uh, stating that essentially we need to be mindful of creating close to seven hundred uh, affordable housing spaces by the year two thousand and thirty, so essentially that means we got to start laying brick and concrete right now and can get to work, so hopefully we'll uh, find solutions to that. Uh, and finally, we received a couple of correspondences uh, from the province, uh, the former government, I guess, of Alberta. Uh, one is good news, the other one was sort of a pat on the back uh, for day shelter services with no actual action coming out of it, but the funding one that we got was a grant for intermunicipal opioid response project that uh, we all moved forward and we received our grant of close to two hundred thousand dollars for that. And that's what that letter detailed, and that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Uh, we'll move on to item nine point two, the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and I think that was yours, Counselor O'Toole.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, I move that council approve the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and nineteen as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
So I've got a number of items that we need to go through, and we'll start off with nine point two point one, uh, the two thousand and nineteen destruction of municipal records. Uh, I, I move the council authorize the destruction of all records listed on the attached Schedule A, and that all records destroyed will be properly listed and incorporated into the minutes of council, along with the signed affidavit as to witnessing of the destruction. And to just speak on that, uh, those of you know that I've asked the same question every year since two thousand and ten. Is there anything here that the archives could use that uh, that we can give to them that uh, maybe has some historical or, or importance? And uh, so the archives gets a chance to look and pick and choose what they could use, and uh, they have nothing that they wanted this year. So all of this stuff is still kept, but it's not on a paper copy. There's all that kind of stuff is still there. It's just the actual destruction of the paper copies.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
Uh, nine point two point two, the two thousand and eighteen audited consolidated financial statements. I move the council approve the audited consolidated financial statements of the city of Grand Prairie for the year ended December thirty first, two thousand and eighteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, any discussion or debate on that motion? I would just note that at the committee level, we had a presentation from the city's auditor that um, highlighted uh, the results, which you'll see the two thousand and eighteen operating surplus are reflected in the next motion, um, but also that the consolidated statements also include the Grand Prairie Public Library, um, the Grand Prairie Airport, and uh, some information related to Aqua Terra as well. Just wanted to highlight that, and they are available for public viewing on the city's website. Um, any other discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole.
Okay, we have the inaud- un-audited financial statements uh, ending December thirty first, two thousand and eighteen. I move the council approve the transfer of the two thousand and eighteen operating surplus of one point six four million dollars to the Financial Stabilization Reserve as per policy three, four, six.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, is there any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Pressy.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to try an amendment here. Don't know if it'll go anywhere, but I'm going to try it anyways. And I, I think that there's been a few opportunities that, as we've been dealing with money and talking about reserves and finance and all that, to put money towards strategic options, and instead of we've been putting into this reserve fu- reserve fund, and an issue I have with that is that by the policy that we created a couple of months ago, this reserve fund is for one-time emerging issues. And I think there's some strategic parties in this community that we've identified that aren't one-time and aren't emerging, and one of those for me is affordable housing and our housing strategy. So I'm going to move to amend this motion that five hundred thousand dollars be directed to our affordable housing strategy, and the remainder be put into Financial Stabilization Reserve. Just remind council, that would give us one million dollars funded towards that strategy, because we already set five hundred thousand dollars aside for that. That's a affordable housing in our community, definitely not emergent. It's been a problem. It's been here for a long time. I think we're just giving it more recognition and more attention now. And I don't think investment in that area is going to be a one-time thing for us, at least, not if we keep on growing. So I don't think that's a good candidate to fund, at least according to our own policies from Financial Stabilization. So I'm hoping that council will be amenable to putting some of this money towards one of our strategic initiatives, not just into reserves.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Pressy. So I would take that motion as in order. Um, it basically just identifies that five hundred thousand with the balance going into the Financial Stabilization Reserve. Um, and I would uh, call for discussion debate on the amendment. Counselor Platt.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I really appreciate the intent, and, and Counselor Pressy, you've been kind of spitballing this a little bit earlier. The more I've thought about it, I, I just can't support it for the fact that I think when we get to the, the, a position where we're actually going to build some affordable housing units, we can move money then. We don't know if a million's enough, if it's too much. So I think we'd be doing, well, we're going to be doing this exercise at some point in time again anyways. So I think we should just stay the course and do what administration's recommending, so I wouldn't support the motion at this time.
It's Counselor Platt. Counselor Thiessen.
Well, I thought all the queues were going to be lighting up here on this motion. I'm actually going to support the motion. Uh, no, Counselor Pressy and I, we talked about it a little earlier this morning. I said I might be able to get it into a little more of a directed funding, and I think uh, your motion puts it exactly there. As I stated earlier with the Living uh, Committee Report, uh, we are in dire needs of getting to start building on, on houses and affordable houses, whether that's more multifamily or whatnot. I think uh, having a little more money in the kitty could get us on the right foot there, and perhaps get uh, more matching funds available from the province and the federal government, which is go beyond us saying, oh, we got land, oh, we cut the red tape. Uh, we can actually say we have funding too and work to match those dollars, so in that regard, uh, and because it's a soft spot in my heart, I'm going to support the Counselor Pressy's motion.
It's Counselor Thiessen. I see Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I uh, also will not be able to support this motion. I um, echoing some of Counselor Platt's comments, I appreciate the intent, have a, um, as Counselor uh, Thiessen said, have a soft spot for the housing needs and, and assessing um, what the future looks like in different types of housing within our community. Uh, my concern is putting, allocating this money when there's no plan yet. You know, we have definitely gone down the path as this council, looking at opportunities and, and housing needs. And I'm confident that we'll get there uh, to when we need this money, but at this time, this money isn't required. And uh, I feel that it's better to sit in a surplus, or sorry, in a, in a reserve, um, until we have a, a finite, defined, clear plan. And uh, and at that time, I'd be much more comfortable using um, the appropriate reserve to fund the housing project as needed. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Um, just a, I guess, a question for administration about the effect of Counselor Pressy's motion. How would it management, uh, what would management do with the five hundred thousand dollars? Where would it go? Ms. Walker. Uh, actually, can you just hit the microphone on button, because I have to clear the whole queue to get to somebody in the queue? You're on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So um, the effect of this motion would be that five hundred thousand dollars would be uh, allocated to the future expenditure reserve until council made a decision as to uh, purpose, um, but would be identified as a affordable housing strategy. And the remainder, uh, one point one zero four uh, would go to the Financial Stabilization Reserve.
So management would put the five hundred thousand in the future expenditures reserve, so it is sitting in a city reserve?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, sorry, I just sort of looked to the side there, because on my screen, I don't see our, our video feed. Is that the same for other council members? Okay, okay, good, but it looks like we're up there, so, um, okay. Thanks very much for that answer. Uh, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I won't be supporting this motion either, from the reasons that Counselor Palet and Clayton have uh, disclosed. And so that's where I feel. No need to go over it again.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Um, I'll enter the, the queue to say that uh, I, I will be supporting the motion. Um, I think the, you know, at a very, very practical level, uh, it's a bit irrelevant. Um, I think council has full latitude, um, uh, to use the Financial Stabilization Reserve, should we choose. I would suggest that um, one, you know, the construction of new affordable housing would be one-time funding, and so I certainly would be happy to make that argument. Having said that, I think that there is a uh, important function to signal towards the community, um, what our intention is, and that we do intend to address the affordable housing need in the community. Um, and I think that it'll make it that much, uh, the process that much easier and faster when we choose to do that. Um, and so for those reasons, uh, I will support the amendment, and if the amendment didn't pass, I would support a motion down the road to address affordable housing need by using it out of the, the uh, Financial Stabilization Reserve if, if needed. But I certainly do support the intent behind Counselor Pressy's motion. Uh, I see Counselor Palat in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question from administration. With moving the funding around, does that affect any sort of returns that we would potentially get on the, on the reserves or whatever bucket it's sitting in?
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, all reserve funds uh, are considered investable, so we do invest all of the um, excess reserve funds. So we do invest all of the excess reserve funds. And so whether it be sitting in the Future Expenditure Reserve or the Financial Stabilization Reserve, it makes no difference. It would be invested.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Counselor Clayton? No, that was it? Okay. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on Counselor Bressi's amendment. I think we're all clear with the intent of the amendment to have $500,000 on management's recommendation would go to the Future Expenditures Reserve and the balance to go to the Financial Stabilization Reserve. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So the motion has been amended, so we will call for the vote on the main motion as amended. Is there any need for another round of discussion and debate? Seeing nobody entering the queue, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And Counselor O'Toole, is there anything else that you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Well, you kind of stole my thunder during the two motions, but I will cover some others. We had our Director Service Area Update. It was a verbal update. They're working very diligently on the Assessment and Taxation Department and the Corporate Facility Management. We've got some projects working on there. And just go over to the Finance Section. Administration is working on a miller rate bylaw with Assessment and Taxation Department. And the 2018 year-end audit is now complete, which we discussed during the motions. Human Resources Administration is involved in a bargaining for the QP and the IAFF negotiations. And the hiring process for a health and safety consultant is now complete. Going on to ITS, Administration is developing a plan to implement security and management processes on the city's OneDrive. And procurement, it's been a big topic over the last 18 months since we got our new person in charge. Administration is working with the Town of Beaver Lodge to assist them with the RFP. They require the City of GP will host a bid on their behalf. And this year has been extremely busy with issuing awards, competitive bids trending 35 to 40% higher volume compared to 2018. And procurement reviews are complete for 27 departments. And as stated, we did do the Grand Prairie Airport audited financial statements in that and also the Grand Prairie Public Library. And that is my report.
Okay, thanks very much, Mayor O'Toole. That handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence this evening, and so that would take us to our delegation business. Our first presentation was with respect to a request for support for Mighty Peace Day. Counselor Friesen.
Thank you. I appreciated the delegation bringing that forward. I've attended a couple of Mighty Peace Days in the past and it's sure something to behold to have all those kids in there as excited as they get. I am prepared to make a motion here and I'm, I'm pleased to move towards supporting in kind, but I'm not crazy about the idea of starting at that full amount. I would like to move that council support to the total of $10,000 gift in kind toward the facility rental for that day.
Sure. Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Palat.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just, a question for administration on that then. If we're doing a gift in kind, I'm assuming this is going to come out of Revolution Place's budget. Have they allocated this when they were looking at their budget for the beginning of the year as an event that they were going to be hosting, that they were thinking this was going to be part of the revenue?
Mr. Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I didn't, I did a little bit of background on it today and I didn't specifically ask that question, but I assume they would have. It's been every two years for the last, at least three, it's been held at least three times, I believe, in the past. So I'm sure they would have included it or they should have for sure. And just a little bit more information too. On top of, they said it'd be about 15,000 in rent for the facility plus another 5,000 for guest services. On top of that, they'd already, I guess, calculated in a gift in kind, valued at about $3,700. It's for tables and chair rentals. So Revolution Place was already willing to donate that. So it's about a 20, almost $24,000 event for the, and it ties up our facility for a total of three days. There's a setup day, the event day, and then a takedown day, which potentially could be sold to somebody else as well. So it's, it definitely is a, you know, a hit to the budget, I guess, for Revolution Place.
Thanks very much, Mr. Miller. Counselor O'Toole.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. I've been into all three of the ones that were in. My two granddaughters were at the last one and my granddaughter got chose to go this year. And I really feel that the amount, amount of people, approximately 3,000 kids, plus the educators and so chaparrons come from all over the North Peace. And I would like to make amendment to the motion to fully fund it to the request of Revolution Spot.
To the $20,000?
Yes.
So that's an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so as we're into amendments tonight, so we can have a discussion debate on the amendment. There is a queue of people here and so we're okay with shifting to talking about the amendment? Okay. One question for administration, probably Ms. Walker. The motion was to provide the gift in kind. What's the sort of, what's the financial implication of that? And does council need to identify a funding source for that or can we just choose not to require payment? I guess, what's the practical level? What should we be saying if, if our intent is kind of the same?
From management's perspective, a funding source would need to be identified. The result of not identifying a funding source would be a deficit in the Revolution Place operating results.
Okay. So, so there's sort of either a choice there. We can choose to fund it from somewhere on the cash basis or when Revolution Place reports their results and says, hey, we ended up $20,000 short of where we projected to be. It's up to us to remember that that was our decision, not theirs. Just so that we're all, we're all clear on that. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. This group did reach out to council before today, so this is a question for, for administration. They reached out earlier and they said there might be a smaller sponsorship available to them without an active council that might be available at the administrative level. Is there something like that and is there something available to them for a smaller scale if council doesn't approve anything today?
Sure, I think that may be Mr. Bork and I think they may have referenced that. Mr. Bork, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor Given. Administration has already approved $2,000 from the corporate sponsorship fund. That is the maximum we can approve from that fund.
Thanks very much, Mr. Bork. Counselor Clayton? Oh, sorry, Counselor Bressi, go ahead, turn your mic on there, sorry. I moved away too quickly.
Yeah, and for me, I'm still, I'm still, I'm really, I'm really struggling if I'm going to support this or not, but I definitely can't support it as just a gift in kind. I don't think that's fair to Revolution Place who is working hard with, they've been having troubles with the US dollar and if making acts more expensive and a few other things. And I don't think it's fair to them to just add $20,000 to their, onto their, onto a potential deficit or take it off their surplus if they, if they do want. So I definitely can't support this if it's a gift in kind. If we identify a funding source, I might be able to support it, but as the motion's standing right now, I can't support the amendment or the motion.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Appreciate you raising that. I think, I don't think I want to go three amendments, you know, two amendments deep. And so it would suggest that we talk about the total amount amendment. And then if there is an amendment to specify a funding source or to make a decision on that, that would be subsequent to us dealing with this one. Counselor Thieson.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry, Counselor Clayton, I guess I jumped the queue. It's the green jacket that says go. I'm, I'm in support of the motion either or 10,000, 20,000. Mighty Peace Day has become an incredible event that inspires our youth in our community to their greater ends. I can appreciate the fact that, you know, working with a new board and, you know, not having all your, your ducks in a row without the previous knowledge being handed down. So I guess I can appreciate that. The 20,000 I'm okay with, the 10,000 I'm okay with. So I think I'm going to be a yes, yes. But once we determine how much that is, I'm just going to throw it out there. I think potentially a good funding source might be to come from our Strategic Initiatives Fund. This would be a one-time thing. I wouldn't consider this going over and over and over again. I think they, we have other committees, Arts Development Committee, that they could apply for festival funding for now that they know that, you know, they can watch the tape, they can talk with us, they can find future funding sources through the city. But as a one-time injection, I think we can help this out. And being strategic, I think it's probably the best strategic course of action we can do to try to grow and groom our leaders right from our youth up into our community. And an event like Mighty Peace Day will inspire them to no ends. So for all those reasons, I'll be in full support and then I'll be pushing to fund it from the Strategic Initiatives Fund.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Clayton, you are next in the queue, but I'm going to jump in to say that, that I won't be supporting the amendment. Because I heard administration say that they have already approved through the corporate sponsorship $2,000, I would support a, if that amendment fails for $20,000, I would support any subsequent amendment that put the amount at $18,000. So it was a total of $20,000 of support through the two sources. And I would also support a funding source as mentioned by Counselor Thieson. But I won't be supporting the $20,000 amendment because it's actually more than they asked for, technically speaking. And I'm not sure that we want to make a motion to pull apart, probably just cleaner that we say 18,000 and the 2,000 that they got makes them whole or, you know, meets their request. Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. So that was to my comment in regards to the, the motion needs to have a subsequent motion to unfund the corporate sponsorship for the amount of $2,000. I did have some other questions, possibly Counselor Thieson can remember because I know it's an event dear to his heart. But can you remind me what the Children's Festival received last year for sponsorship?
Counselor Thieson?
Yeah, the Children's Festival received $10,000 plus a variety of gift in kinds through like museum space and other stuff. I think totaling in value close to $15,000.
Thank you. A question for administration. Ms. Walker, can you tell me, Counselor Thieson had referenced it coming out of his Strategic Initiatives Plan. To my knowledge, when we had gift in kind, we didn't necessarily take money and, and transfer it to facilities. So correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that this gift in kind will come through the facility and then at turn, the facility may, if they don't make up that money over the years, need more sort of subsidization, but it wouldn't be a cash check written from one fund to another, correct?
Ms. Walker?
That's correct. There is no transaction of cash.
Great, thank you. So, and another comment Mr. Miller, Director Miller made in regards to the potential loss of revenue for this facility. My concern would be as if this event, they've already said the event will go ahead regardless of our support or not, wouldn't be ideal without our support. And it also isn't realistic that an event that needs three days of a booking would come along at this day in the game. So I don't really think it's a potential loss of revenue. I think that this event has proven to be impactful in youth grade five to nine through our community. It's definitely been recognized throughout We Day circuits around the world as, as what we've been able to do without being on the We Day circuit. For $20,000 gift in kind, in my opinion, it's, it's small compared to the other events that we sponsor in, in magnitude of cash and gift in kind. So I strongly encourage council to support this motion. I do feel there should be a subsequent motion or, I know you don't want a third amendment, however you want to do that. If council chooses to defeat this motion, I'd be willing to put forward an amendment to $18,000 to the first standing motion. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Clayton. I see Counselor Palat and then Counselor Bressi.
Thanks, Mayor Given. This one saddens me a little bit because I have a ton of respect for Ron and Randy, the presenters, and I know it's a great event, but I can't support the full amount. And the reason I can't is I think we constantly hear in the community, we need a little bit more corporate backbone. And this is a group that walked in today and asked for funding and we're trying to find it for them. And I think without going through proper process, proper channels, we're releasing ourselves up again for another one of those. Well, we did it for one, why wouldn't we do it for another one? And so I could, yeah, I can support the motion is just for that reason. And it saddens me to say that, but I think we're, we're opening a Pandora box here by just letting a walk-in come and ask for money and we fully fund it. So I urge you to really think about that before you support this one.
Thanks, Counselor Palat. Counselor Bressi.
A question for administration, I might be going the same direction as that, but question for administration, we heard a rough budget from the group today in terms of $240,000 total budget, about $180,000 for this event. But have they submitted or has administration examined any financial statements or any budget from this group? Or have we actually physically seen any numbers given to us by this group?
I'm looking to see if that's Mr. Miller or Mr. Bork.
Mayor Given, financials are not a requirement of the sponsorship application form. I have not seen any.
Mr. Miller, did you have anything additional?
Thanks, Mayor Given. The only thing I have is just the cost that Revolution Place put together. But I know we have funded it three events in the past and I'm sure for that process, we did, the city provided $10,000 per event, I believe is what it was. And it was a more robust application process through community social development. So I'm pretty positive they would have received some financials then and to validate the credibility of the event.
Yeah, sure. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you. This is, this is a hard one for me because I really do have a lot of respect, respect for this event. I've seen it impact kids in this community and as I said, I plan to be there volunteering myself. I really do believe this event, but I'm really concerned about us moving forward with granting this today where we had a request not even a couple of hours ago and for us to give funding to it now when we haven't seen financials, when administration hasn't had financials. I really do trust the board. I really do trust the two guys that came before us, but at the same time, it's a new board and we haven't seen financials from the new board. And I think it would be irresponsible, it would be our due diligence to go forward with this right now. I've also got concerns just about transparency and public input. I know that the public will have a strong opinion about this and for us to make a decision about funding this that might set expectations with other groups when the public hasn't even had a chance to know we're having this discussion really concerns me. So I think we heard today that this event's going to go forward. The real issue is what happens in the fall and what happens in the future with them. And I think I might be able to say yes to this group, even outside of our normal budget process with a bit more due diligence. But today, I definitely can't say, I definitely can't say yes to this. I need a bit more process than we've had. And that, that pains me because I really do love this group.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. A comment was made prior in regards to this is a time, an event that needs corporate support and, and corporate community to step up. And I can tell you from, from my corporate job that they have worked very hard in, in increasing their corporate support in a short amount of time. I know the asks that they've made throughout the corporate community and they are increased over, over prior years. And I remind council that this gift of kind, it pales in comparison to other things that we, we support that don't, that don't have near the impact that this does of youth of a prime age. The youth in this event are deeply impacted by what goes forward. The volunteer base of this far exceeds the cost of this event. And the event truly is a one-day event that is, is shared throughout the region and is shown to children that they talk about continually on and on. And, and the point being of a $20,000 gift in kind. This isn't cash out of money, out of budgets that we haven't budgeted for, albeit this may leave one of our facilities short. End of the day, there's many other facilities that aren't working as hard as that facility is to recoup what they've done over the past years. They're continuing to grow their audiences, they're growing their events. And this facility, I bet you if you asked this facility, they would want this event there. So keep in mind that this is a very impactful event in our community. And sure, they said they'll go on without it, but we have had other organizations and other events in our community that we didn't want to set up for failure and written the very, very big checks to make sure they continue on. This is a small gift in kind and I encourage council to support it.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I see Counselor Palat in the queue. I would just ask council to make sure that we, I'll give you one last opportunity on this. We need to get to the vote on the amendment so we can vote on the main motion and any other subsequent amendments that might come. Counselor Palat?
Thank you. And this is just a question for administration, maybe just to understand the motion. So we're just, we haven't identified a funding source at this point with this motion. We're just saying it's an amount and then we're going to discuss if it comes from the strategic fund or where it's going to come from at that point.
That's my understanding. That's my understanding. I didn't hear, uh, Councilor Freezen in the first instance or Councilor O'Toole in the second instance identify a funding source. I did hear Councilor O'Toole's say, uh, gift and kind. And I think that's what Councilor Freezen said as well. So both, um, the two motions that were before us, uh, I guess actually, uh, maybe I'll retract that. Uh, were specific in saying gift and kind, which would be, uh, not a funding from, uh, the, from Strategic Initiatives.
And my other question, I guess, from administration is not, not fully understanding all the different funding that's available. Is there any other funding, had they applied earlier, that they would have been able to, to grant? Whether it's a small-scale, large-scale tourism, any of the other, it's development, any of the other grants that they would have been able to qualify for?
Sure, Mr. Miller?
I think, uh, what, what they could have applied through is, uh, community group funding, had they, uh, realized what the deadlines were. I spoke with Mr. Glenn and, uh, Mr. Regnier before the meeting and, uh, and asked why so late in the game politely. And, and they said, uh, like they mentioned in, in their presentation that the board, uh, previous board members resigned. So they were kind of, uh, I guess, not fully informed as to processes. So they're doing their best to, uh, try to put it together in time for the May 7th, uh, event. In the past, uh, funding has been provided by Community Social Development. They have, uh, they call it a, a special projects fund. And there is, uh, some funding available there too, so we could potentially look at that if, uh, council decides to. I, uh, also, two weeks ago, I received a, a voicemail from Mr. Glenn. It was just prior to the council meeting and I was at meetings throughout the day. And then I think it was the next morning I received the message and he was asking if he could attend council as a delegation, which would have been two weeks ago. So would have been a little bit more notice for council. But unfortunately I didn't get back to him until the next morning that I received the message and, uh, council had already met. So, so he did try to make it here two weeks ago.
Thank you, Director Miller, on that. I appreciate the, that. And just, it's unfortunate the timing just hasn't worked out for the group. Like, they, they probably wish it would as well, so.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Platt. Uh, is there anybody else? Uh, Director Miller, I still see Community Living in the, uh, queue. Did you have anything else to add? Um, then we will call for the vote on Councilor O'Toole's amendment, which was to, to recognize, uh, $20,000 in gift and kind. Um, and so I will call for the vote on Councilor O'Toole's amendment.
You be upset of, no, we'll do it.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Uh, so I'll call for the vote on Councilor O'Toole's motion to amend the amount to $20,000, uh, with the same gift and kind as the, as the source. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. Councilor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd like to make an amendment to the motion, uh, to fund, uh, the Mighty Peace Youth Day to $18,000 gift and kind for the youth of the facility. No, that'll get rid of it, right?
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. So that's another, um, that last amendment failed, so this is an additional amendment. Um, we had a round of debate and discussion on the previous one. Do we need any additional on Councilor Clayton's amendment? Councilor Platt?
Yeah, I guess for me, that still would be almost adding another amendment because I want to know where the funding sources coming from, for me personally. If this is coming out of the council's Strategic Initiative and not going gift and kind, um, I could support that because it's council's decision to take money out of our own bucket. And I can support that. I don't want to see it, um, gift and kind and not supporting a facility and then having a shortfall somewhere else. So for me, I would support this if it's coming out of the council funds. Otherwise, I wouldn't be able to support it.
Sure, fair enough. Um, and, uh, as I've said before, I think rather than getting a, an amendment on amendment, which gets pretty challenging to follow, uh, my advice would be that council votes how they need to vote on this motion. And should somebody choose to make an amendment to identify the funding source, then we could do that subsequent. I know it's a bit painful to not know the, how that's resolved before you vote or call the vote on this one. Um, but I certainly would support any subsequent amendment to identify it as a council Strategic Initiatives-funded, um, decision. I would support that as well. Uh, and on that basis, I will be supporting the amendment. Is there anybody else that wishes to enter the queue here? I don't see anybody. So we will call for the vote on Councilor Clayton's motion to identify $18,000 gift and kind, uh, support for the Mighty Peace Day. Uh, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Um, and are there any other subsequent amendments to the main motion before we vote on it? Councilperson Theeson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, is this the point where I'd be recommending the, the funding? Yeah, for sure. So I would, uh, move to amend the motion of $18,000 to be funded from council's Strategic Initiatives Fund.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilperson Theeson. So that motion is to identify that, uh, uh, this is, uh, not funded out of the, the departmental or facility budget, but rather out of, uh, the funds that council set aside to address, uh, one-time uh, or emergent needs as directed by council. Uh, open for discussion, debate. Councilor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd encourage council to support this if you've got intention of supporting, of supporting this funding, funding at all. And I think that if we're gonna make this decision, we need to wear it. I think that we've tasked administration with setting an aggressive budget with finding us tax savings without compromising services. I think they're delivering on that, but that is based on us following their recommendations of how to accomplish that. This is an area where they, this is not a recommendation from administration. This is something we're doing on our own initiative. And that is what the Strategic Initiatives Funding is there for. Because we knew that situations like this would come up, that would be outside of admin recommendations. But we'd want to fund anyways. So that is exactly what this funding is for. And I don't know how we can expect administration to be aggressive with their budget if we're not willing to use our own buckets to fund things like this. So I'd encourage council to support this amendment.
Thanks, Councilor Bressi. Councilor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, I'm a little bit torn on this one. It's, I, um, I appreciate the intent. I guess my concern is, and we've had other discussions like this earlier today, where we haven't done a great job of tracking gift and kind. And we have many events and organizations throughout our, um, throughout our company and organization that use gift and kind, um, through different parks, through different facilities. We're not doing a great job of tracking it right now. Administration, as NCLT has said, they are gonna get, you know, a hold on this and, and, and come back with a plan for us to value this. Um, and I just don't know if we're a little bit ahead of the game to start doing this one. We're gonna start writing checks to different departments and, and, and it feels a little not right to me in the sense that we're not really prepared for this gift and kind process when we haven't identified what's happening within other departments. So, um, I'm not sure I'm gonna support this because I, I, I just don't think we're quite ready for this. The process to date has been that we do things like this for gift and kind. And so if we're gonna start with this one by taking it out of council Strategic Initiatives Fund, then I feel like we're a little premature in making that decision. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Um, I will s- offer to council that there is actually precedent for this. Um, historically, the Legion, uh, Remembrance Day was funded, has been funded different ways. Sometimes out of the facility budget. Um, and there were explicit decisions of council to provide funding to the Legion to cover the exact same amount. So it didn't come out of the facility budget. Um, so it has been done different ways, um, uh, in the past. And so it's, um, I think either approach wouldn't be completely out of the ordinary for the city. I think we have a history of doing sort of both approaches. Um, I would agree that it's complicated to decide whether, you know, um, uh, to, to, maybe in terms of tracking, uh, I would suggest that the, the gift and kind would be more challenging to track rather than just the City of Grand Parade decided to sponsor the event for X dollar amount. And, and that's what we did. Councilor Platt?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion. Um, and mostly just because I think that the, the precedents that I didn't like was that somebody could come in and ask for funding and that we would, we'd find money for it, find gift and kinds. I can agree with Councilor Clayton that I'm looking forward to administration having more time to get us in a better position so we fully understand how much we're giving to community groups around the, the city outside of just cash. But in the gifts and kinds, because I think it's gonna be a pretty staggering number. But having said that, I think for a precedence, if somebody, another group decides to come in and do this, that there is no funding available. We're not just gonna gift and kind, just to gift and kind. And that council would have to, to take it upon themselves to go, is this the best use of the money that, that administration gave us for a four-year term to use on our own, uh, initiatives? And I think for this one, it is for me, because I think it's been a great event for the community. Um, I think some extraordinary circumstances unfortunately for their group has put them in a spot where they weren't able to apply in time. So I think this is the, you know, not, not that I dreamed of, hey, let's spend our money on doing these kind of things with their, with their fund. But I think if it's there, this is what it's there for. So I will be supporting it.
Thanks, Councilor Platt. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I, uh, I look back over the years and see how many people, children have gone through this. And, uh, I think they've got a good track record, uh, the organization itself. It's a world-class presentation that's put on with the support of the Revolution Place. And, uh, either way, whether we gift and kind or whether we take it out of the stabilization fund, I, I think now that they've been shocked, that they realize that they, whoops, didn't lift that bucket to find out what's next. Uh, I think they'll never make this mistake again, this particular, uh, or administration for this group. And, uh, I think, uh, they will have lots of support from administration to find funding sources in the future. And like I said before, uh, it's, uh, every year, uh, they host this event every second year. So, uh, I know for a fact that, uh, they go to a lot of schools and a lot of young people have been changed and rewarded as well. So, it's my two cents.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. If I don't see anybody else in the queue, uh, then I will call for the vote on Councilor Theeson's amendment to identify the funding sources being the Council Strategic Initiatives Fund. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, and so we're back to the main motion as amended and amended and amended, uh, um, which is now, uh, to fund the Mighty Peace Day. Um, request to the amount of $18,000 funded from the council's Strategic Initiatives Fund. It seems like it took a long time to get there. Um, but I think we did it in the right order and everybody was able to keep track of where we were. So, um, discussion, debate on the main motion. Councilor Bressi?
And Mayor Given, I guess I just don't understand what our rush is. I don't understand why we need to hear from this today and give the money today. I'd be very supportive if we said, hey, management, we're directing you guys to go through an expedited process with these guys to do our due diligence and, uh, and we want to fund this, but we just can't do it right now. I'd be very supportive of that because, again, it's a group that I do support. But the idea that we're gonna, that we're gonna give this money to a group without seeing any current financials, even though they've got a brand-new board, the idea that we're gonna give this money to the group without seeing a budget, just hearing about a budget. And the idea that we're gonna give a mon- money to this group if the public has no idea we're even having this conversation. I think that is a very irresponsible way for us to, to give money. And as much as I trust this group, I do think that there is a basic amount of due diligence that we need to deal with public money. And that clearly isn't being done if we do this today. So I would urge council to defeat this motion. And if it does defeat this motion, then I will definitely support a motion to direct administration to go through an expedited process to find support for this group after doing due diligence. But let's just slow, slow down. There's no reason we need to do this tonight. We heard from the group, this event that's in a couple of weeks is happening no matter what.
Thanks, Councilor Bressi. Uh, any other discussion or debate on the motion? Uh, I don't see anybody else in the queue, um, but I will say that, uh, I'm, continue to be supportive of the motion. I appreciate the point about process and, and would agree with that. Um, and I guess my level of, uh, comfort may be different from other council members. Um, having seen the group do its, uh, work before, and I appreciate actually Councilor Bressi acknowledging he has significant and sincere trust in the organization. Um, I guess for me, uh, at some point, the right thing to do is the right thing to do. Uh, this is council-directed money, um, where, uh, ev- every one of us, and even those who are maybe not supportive, uh, for tonight, uh, are, understand the organization, appreciate the intent of the event, um, and to have a high level of trust in the organization. And so my question would be, other than demonstrating good process, uh, would it actually ultimately change the result? And if it's not gonna change the result, then let's just do the right thing. That's where I fall on this one. And I can appreciate that not everybody else would. Um, but for me, it's the, the right thing to do is the right thing to do. And why wait to do that? Councilor O'Toole?
Uh, it's been a while since I've heard the motion. I was wondering if you could just read the motion again so we know exactly what we're talking about, sir.
Sure, um, I can either restate it or I could look at our, um, recording secretary to ensure that, uh, that what we've got on the paper is what we all actually think we're voting on. Next, Mr. Kirk?
So the main motion was moved by Councilor Freezen that council support up to $10,000 as a gift and kind.
Sorry, rather than going through each of the, what are we voting on now?
So tonight your move, or your voting on, moved by Councilor Freezen, that council support up to $18,000 be fun, and that it be funded out of council's Strategic Initiative Fund and not out of the operating budget.
Oh, mic drop. Get that every time. Okay, so the motion, uh, is, uh, on the floor. Is there any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Uh, and that motion carries. Uh, I think that deals with all of our business related to that item. Uh, we did have one other delegation, uh, that presented with respect to a sidewalk removal in the 2019 Sidewalk and Trail Program. Um, I have a council member, uh, make a motion arising from that. Councilperson Theeson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, yeah, I'd love to see a report come to a standing committee. So from that regard, I would move that, uh, this issue be brought to the appropriate standing committee. I would imagine that would be our IPS, uh, Standing Committee Meeting. And just to speak into it, uh, as a counselor, I know we don't dwell into the operational, uh, stuff of our administration. But this is the first time that I've actually heard of a complete sidewalk removal. And I've only been on council for six years. I'm not Helen Rice. But, uh, I like to see the reasoning why, the condition of the sidewalk, uh, if it needs to be removed and all that stuff. So all very valid reasons, uh, especially for the impact on the community as well. So I'd like to see this come as soon as possible.
Thanks very much, Councilperson Theeson. Councilor Bressi?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, if I could just ask clarification on the motion, is this for a verbal or a written report to come to committee?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Councilor Bressi. I would, I would hope to see a written report. And, uh, the reason being on that is, um, there's probably a bunch of questions that are gonna come up out of that that I think administration would come through with a very thoughtful process. Why they said that we deemed that the sidewalk needs to go, the current condition of the sidewalk, stuff like that. So something that council can read beforehand and see before it actually gets to the table. So they have the appropriate questions. And if we're gonna change the course of administration's direction, then, you know, at least we have all that in front of us beforehand.
I see, uh, the acting city manager has a request for council to provide a little bit more direction. Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, so this isn't the first time that we've removed a, removed a sidewalk. Last year, we had a project in Highland Park where we had a similar situation where we did remove a sidewalk. We didn't have pushback from the community in that area. Uh, this year, we have two phases of sidewalk removal that we're doing in Patterson. Uh, the first phase has been tendered. Uh, we received the tenders back. We have not awarded the tender. Uh, so if, and if this discussion tonight, uh, you believe influences, uh, how the city should be replacing sidewalks, we do have a tender to be awarded that we're holding off on, uh, awarding, uh, which we have a short, short window, uh, to do. I think, uh, Ms. Donnelly may be able to give a little bit more information on our construction window for that tender. But, uh, this theoretically could impact another project.
So just, um, so Ms. Donnelly, when you're sort of providing your question, if council chose to have a more fulsome report with the technical experts at the table at the Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee, how would that impact the tendering process for this project or any others this summer? Donnelly?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, so actually, if you wanted to put on the screen, we have a Phase One Sidewalk Program, which is, I don't know if you can see my mouse on there. It's this area in Patterson as well as this lower area. Um, that is Phase One. That has been tendered and closed. The delegation came today to speak about a site that's up in this other area, which is Phase Two. We have not fend, we have not put out Phase Two for tender. It's one of, um, many sites, but it's the only one that has removal. So, uh, that one could be withdrawn because, and it would not affect that tender because it has not yet gone out. It, far as the Phase One tender goes, if we wish to see construction this year, it is something that we would need to, uh, proceed on fairly quickly and really wouldn't, work timing-wise for this construction season. It would be tight. We could, we could do it. It's just that it would likely delay the contractor's ability to, uh, get mobilized and everything for, for this construction season if we're going to go through a report. So there are the two different phases. The first phase, we did have some calls, but we did not receive the same level of concern as we have with the Phase Two site.
And just for clarity, the one that's numbered five there on that map, that's one of the Phase Two sites. There are other Phase Two sites as well?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The, there are other, um, sites in Phase Two, but none of them, they're only on one side and they're along, they're, they're completely different locations and would not be impacted by the decision.
And so, uh, Ms. Donnelly, um, this may help us. Is there, at this stage, without having the rest of your team here, um, would it be possible to remove this site from Phase Two and, and allow the rest of Phase Two to go forward? would it be possible to remove this site from phase two and and allow the rest of phase two to go forward?
Mayor Given, yes, there's actually, the tender actually might be out there with this as a deletable item. We heard the concerns in time to make sure it was a something that didn't impact phase two far as it going out. So the rest of phase two could proceed with this one removed.
So so council, if if that's possible, that would be my advice to council. If this is, if administration doesn't identify any other reason that this needed to go ahead this year and could be considered in a future year, perhaps we'd like to ask administration to remove this and bring a report to the appropriate standing committee. That way we can look at this site specific, understand any issues related to it without holding up the rest of the sidewalk program and the other areas that were intended to have sidewalk replacements done in 2019. Just to sort of offer that as a suggestion. That way, if council wanted to move forward with the site, it could be in a future year, and we would give ourselves more room to make that consideration and have that discussion while not impacting other sites. Councillor Thieson, you're in the queue.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, very much, Mayor Given. So I guess I got other questions now. Would we make that motion here tonight if we were going to remove that and then bring it back to the appropriate standing committee? Some I still would love to see your report and to to know why. I'm not questioning administration's judgment, but there's obviously some pushback from the community that is directly impacted by it. So I think for us to have that understanding, the same level of knowledge that administration has, as well as to be able to talk to the members of that community, I think would be appropriate. But as far as removing it at this point, would I just strike my motion and then restate it? Okay.
Sure, councillor Thieson, if you'd like to do that.
Okay, well, let's strike my previous motion and we'll redo this. I would move that council remove the site specific in phase two of this tender project from the process and to bring a report addressing the concerns of our delegation to the appropriate standing committee.
Maybe just to add from the 2019 program.
Sidewalk program, yeah, for sure.
And so that doesn't obviously remove the need necessarily. It just gives us more space to be able to have that conversation while allowing the other sites that are in the phase two.
To get their work done, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other, thanks councillor Thieson. Any other discussion or debate? Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Not a debate or anything, but just a, just a, or not even a question, just a comment to administration, a question. When that report does come forward, I know that I'm sure that it'll focus on the engineering side and why these minimum headers exist and why this is moving forward. And I think that's a very important discussion. But I also think there's a discussion to be had in there of what's our process for when a community does does push back and what's our, what's our process for? Do we want a process to make exceptions to the guide, what's that look like? And I think it'd be useful to have that kind of process conversation at the same time. So I don't know if that needs to appear in the report, but that's definitely a topic I'll very likely be bringing up if nobody else does at that committee meeting, so just so that we can be prepared for that.
Thanks, councillor Bressi. Councillor O'Toole.
Mayor Given, I just got a question to engineering. There was a comment made during the presentation. Is the road going to be narrowed by any means or is it going to go back onto the sidewalk or onto the property owner's land? This, the new and improved sidewalk.
Ms. Donnelly.
The proposal was to find the space by removing one sidewalk to allow the other to be widened. So if we can't remove one, then something else has to get the width of the road or the properties. So that is the situation that we're in.
Thank you very much.
So at this stage, though, there's there may be a number of other technical questions. At this stage, though, councillor Thieson's motion would allow us to review this at a committee meeting with the other technical experts in the room. Ms. Donnelly doing an able, able job. But that way we'd have the sort of the project sponsors there to be able to speak to the standards and any other considerations. Is there anybody else that wishes to care to speak on this? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That item will come up at the appropriate standing committee at the appropriate time, but has been removed from the 2019 program. So there will be more discussion on that site in the future. I think that handled all of our delegation business, and that would take us item 12.1. Notice of motion. Councillor Thieson, I think you have something for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given, as introduced by our chief of staff, Mr. Burke. This is a notice of motion for bylaw C-962V, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw. And this will be presented for three readings at the next city council meeting scheduled for Monday, May 6, 2019.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. You know, we get notices of motion so rarely, I can't even remember if we vote on them. I think they're just issued. Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. So notice of motion hereby given, and we'll move into council member reports. And we'll start off with councillor O'Toole and the Combative Sports Commission.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On June 15th at Revolution Place, weather dependent, there may be an event held in the parking lot outside Revolution Place. It'll be a amateur-only event, and it will be XFC number 22 for them, which is a local promoter. Couple of weeks before that, this promoter will be in Toronto, so doing a event out there. So that's our report from the Combative Sports Commission.
Great, thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Would that be our first outdoor event?
No, well, in the city it would be. They did one at the tech center a couple of years ago. And about 15 seconds after the final bell rang and everybody got out of the ring, it downpoured. So we're not necessarily sure if it's going to be held outside.
Okay, okay, thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. The next up was councillor Bressi with the Grand Prairie Regional Emergency Partnership. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you. So with it being in the parking lot, councillor O'Toole, will it be gravel on the gravel?
You just read your report, okay?
So I, so GPREP is my report today. Unfortunately, at our last meeting, there were not enough elected representatives there from other municipalities, so we did not reach quorum. So we're going to have another in a couple of weeks, but we still had had an opportunity to have some good discussion. And two things that might interest council is, one, if you recall, in our budget, we helped fund a temporary position for emergency social services. Somebody to spend a year and a half helping plan for how do we provide social services in the end of a disaster. The day of our meeting, that position had just been accepted, so that's work that's going to be starting soon. Something else, I know that this council's had questions before about how about the resources we spend on training staff. And there's a lot of training that goes into training people for GPREP, so that was a topic of conversation. And I was really glad to hear that there's recently been some changes to make sure that the staff that get that are getting trained for GPREP are both available and committed to fulfilling roles in emergency. And so training's been a big topic with GPREP, which I was excited to hear. A question that that I'm, that I'd love to ask council, and if you guys have any input before our next meeting, I'd love to hear it, is a service that GPREP has previously had was a rapid response team for small scale, for small scale emergencies. And what this is, is sometimes you'll have, how these are defined is if more than four housing units are affected by an event, but it's not a big enough event for the emergency coordination center to be activated. So an example might be a small apartment building catches on fire. Well, then you've got, you've got people in that apartment building that have to figure out where to go, what they're going to do. How do you take care of them? And previously, GPREP had a rapid response team to take care of people on small scale emergencies. That's been suspended for now due to lack of resources. So a conversation we're going to be having our next GPREP meeting is, should that be a GPREP slash regional thing? Or should be that be something that each municipality takes on on its own? Or is there another solution out there? I have no idea where that conversation is going to go, but I'd love to hear from you folks if you have thoughts about, is that a service that's important in our community? If so, do we want to do it on our own or should we be looking at that regionally? So heads up, we're having that discussion.
Thanks very much, councillor Bressi. And councillor Thieson, I think you had peace library system.
I guess, thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, the peace library system met last weekend on Saturday out in Spirit River, just as the executive committee and most of what we talked about will get pushed forward to their general board. So some of the things we went over, I received a report from the director. Good news is that the Grand Cash Library and the MDA Greenview has all their ducks in a row, and they're set to open their doors on May 15th, so that was really good. I know that created a bit of consternation amongst the group, especially amongst people in the MDA as to all the process that they had to go through in order to make that happen. There was also a discussion about supernet and the fact that bandwidth is very expensive to upgrade for small rural libraries. And a motion came up from the executive to move to the to the general board to discuss our advocacy priorities as helping out rural libraries, cover the costs through the new government on upgrading their their supernet capabilities. Speaking of supernet, we also updated our five-year capital plan. So this is a review of all of our reserves and whether or not over the next five years we hadn't accumulated enough reserves to upgrade things such as our building, technology, vehicles and furnishings. We did budget for decreasing reserve amounts with the uncertainty of a new government coming in. We're not sure how that's going to go yet, but we figured better be safe than sorry. And of course, we had our review of our 2018 annual reports, which will show up in your mailbox once it's approved by the general board. And we reviewed seven policies. One got sent back for a little more work. That was the employee attendance policy. And there's some good discussion in and around that, just how how our staff at the peace library systems accumulate sick days. So it was eye-opening for some of the people around the table. And so we put it back there to maybe make it more reasonable and or change it for the future. So we'll see how that goes. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Thieson. And councillor Clayton, you had Nighthawk.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Not per se a report on the facility, but just a informational piece. Nighthawk does their annual golf tournament on June 6th. It's their single, single largest fundraiser of the year. Over the last two years, it's allowed them to do upgrades to their washroom facilities as well as adding additional space for rental and learn to ski area, meeting places and and an enhanced deck. So if you're of the golfing mind and are looking for something on June 6th, I encourage you to attend. Thanks.
Thanks very much, councillor Clayton. I don't think there are any other reports from our external agencies, boards and commissions. And so we'll go to council member roundtable and we'll start with councillor Friesen.
Thank you. I did a few fun things this past week. I got to go to a grade six class at St. Catherine's School to spend some time talking about municipal politics. And of course, that was just a few days before the election, so they were keen to know my thoughts on that as well. I also was able to attend for the first time. I I went out the other evening and attended one of the parkside community meetings just to kind of see how things were settling in. And it sounds like there's a lot of movement in how the how the surrounding community is responding to parkside. In just in terms of, there's been, in in some ways, a noticeable decrease in concerns. And then in other ways, the concerns that still exist are are still very urgent for those folks. And so a bit of a shift there, but it was great to hear how CMHA has has moved in and has put their their policies into place at that facility and how it has overall reduced the number of crime calls there significantly. And yeah, anyway, it's just interesting to 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 head out, have a look at how things are working there. And I was also, just quickly, I'll say that I was able to attend the art gallery of Grand Prairie the other night. GPRC students had an art show there, and I just thoroughly enjoyed myself, enjoyed the art a great deal. So if you get the opportunity to head upstairs there, do so because there are some great pieces of art by students. And how exciting for them to be able to have their works displayed in a world-class facility like like our art gallery. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Friesen. Councillor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had a couple of things that may have been mentioned in the past, but I wanted to touch base on. I attended the spring conference of AUMA, where municipal leaders from across the province get together and talk about relevant issues. It's a much smaller event compared to the fall AUMA event. However, there was an opportunity to get together with other municipalities, and I had a chance to say hello to our past CAO. Sorry, I said hello to all, to him from all of you. And it was, it was a nice sort of short conference that I thought was great. So and I also want to thank Mayor Given for the work he continues to do with that organization because it's really appreciated on behalf of us. So thank you for that. I also attended, and it may have been brought up by councillor Bressi or councillor Palat, the housing conference, the Canadian Housing Conference, albeit a great opportunity to see some excellent projects that are being executed in Victoria. Some of the content wasn't what I was expecting. However, there was truly some good learning experiences in in the walking tours and the sort of out in the community learning opportunities that we did as well. I thoroughly enjoyed an opportunity for council and to meet with all the three major parties that met prior to the election. I thought it was great that council took the time to meet with the UCP and the Alberta Party and the NDP candidates. I think it's important for us as council, as we've done in prior terms, to meet with parties and candidates from all parties. So I thought that was a really good initiative, and I appreciate everyone taking the time for that. And that's my report. Thanks.
Thanks very much, councillor Clayton. Councillor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Did a number of events this couple of weeks. I will talk about two of them, and they happened on the 12th of April. I attended the Grand Prairie Cricket Association Awards Night. Just to give you a little feedback or a little history, about five years ago, the Cricket Association did not exist. They come to the city and ask for some support in finding them a field. There was probably about 40 members that would come out and play casual in the Harry Balfour Avondale Schoolyard. We've able to find them a location just behind Ideal Ceramics in the in the storm drain area there. They got a cricket field. They were able to support two teams the first year. Then that jumped up to five teams of men. Then they produced a children's group and teams for that. And this year, they are now going to field a women's team. And that's pretty amazing for those people. They have, this is one of those areas where this group has worked diligently to get funding, worked very hard, and the amount of stuff that they have done is just simply amazing. They've set the pace for the province of Alberta in cricket. And I know for a fact that they're not giving up. They're going to continue to keep growing and growing and growing. And so that was the one event. And so they won the provincial championship last year. The very first year they applied, the association wouldn't let them in the league because they said they weren't good enough. And anyhow, and then after that event, I came into town and I attended the YCM, YMCA fundraiser. And then we went home after that. So they're both supportive organizations for this community. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think my highlight was I got to go to a GP woodworking club meeting. And this group of people, I didn't know what to expect, but when I got there, it was there were teenagers in the room and there were seniors in the room. And so a big age group, and what they do is they share about the projects they're working on, and then they share some knowledge and skills. So if you guys want to learn how to sharpen a bandsaw, come talk to me, and I can throw some technical terms around at you, even though I don't know what any of them mean. And but it was, what was fun about this meeting was that just happened to be, I hit the one where they in court, where they started their incorporation process, so they're becoming a registered group. And the reasons they're doing that is they're going to be able to get insurance now, which means that they'll be able to actually work on projects as a group. Right now, their homeowner's insurance for the shops they meet in only allows them to work with two people at a time. Open to do some bigger groups, both to get some products, some projects to contribute to the community out and also to help teach new members skills. So that was cool. But the other thing that they're hoping to get someday is a space of their own, a public shop where people can come to learn woodworking and a place where entrepreneurs and other business people who maybe are just getting their start or maybe don't have a need for a full shop can go and get access to tools to start a business or start or start a hobby. And that's something I think is really important, both for economic development in our community, for social connection, and also just for having something for our seniors to do. I think one of the biggest issues with, I've seen with senior men, is they age out of the hobbies they have. And a lot of them, that's woodworking, where they move to a new house and they can't keep their shop anymore. So I really wish that group success, and I look forward to seeing how we can help. So I really wish that group success and I look forward to seeing how we can help them out in the future.
Thanks very much, Councilor Ressi. Councilor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry, my, my button wasn't on there. I actually had a quite a busy week. Last week, I was supposed to be slow and then it filled up with a bunch of coffee dates and other meetings largely around, I had a couple of extras pop up with the Tabano Group. But that's not kind of what I want to talk about. There was a lot of people that mentioned disappointment in the fact that Councilor O'Toole didn't make it to the 80s Nights until a little bit later. Apparently, he's been a hit over the last two or three years and they're really looking forward to him coming all decked out to the nines. And you could see the sad panda faces when he came in a classic suit and, you know, was hobnobbing around as Councilor O'Toole does. But I think people expected the ACDC banger boy that came out in the previous year. But it was good. I was happy to bring greetings for the city and be a representative there for that wonderful event, dressed as one of five Don Johnsons, believe it or not. It was pretty awesome. The one event that I really want to talk about was an event that wasn't really an event. I guess I didn't get this request that came through council, but it came because of my role on council. If you are aware, during the election, I was running a series of Community Couch episodes. Really, I was just filling in for my cohort, Dave Doyle, who was talking all things politics. But it wasn't the original purpose of the Community Couch. It was to really have like intense and engaging discussions with people in the community who are addressing community issues and not just the election. So I was asked to sit on as a panelist from City Council with Tyler Savired from Mom Stop the Harm, Jared Gosson from the St. Lawrence Centre, and Sheldon, who I don't have his last name, but if you've seen Critical Condition, the documentary that was filmed by our Grand Prairie Opiate Task Force, he was one of the members featured there. So we talked a bit about drug addictions, the opioid crisis, what was happening at the Rotary House, what's happening at St. Lawrence Centre, what are potential solutions going forward? We got a lot of great feedback on the Facebook Live feed. And by the time we clicked out, at least 3,000 people clicked in just to maybe see, see a sentence or two before they scrolled past us. But some people stuck around and the conversation was very, very engaging. I know I learned a lot. I hope I was able to provide some knowledge from a city standpoint and my former background in the housing sector and with Canadian Mental Health Association. But the discussion was really, really good and I was really blown away. Have to throw it out there to Sheldon. He wasn't as comfortable being under, on, on camera and being as live as he could have been. But I mean, some of the things he said were just real mind-blowing stuff about how to overcome, you know, your own demons and how to get yourself back upon your feet and really drive yourself to the success that you need to see in your life from a personal progressive standpoint, not from a, oh, financial, successful, how the world wants to see you. But it was a really great perspective to have and we had a really great feedback during the time that he spoke. And I kept urging him, I said, "Miss, I was like, see more, see more. Let's bring you back in the conversation because the stuff you're saying is really cool." So I really appreciated that opportunity and to sit with that great group of people talking about an issue in our community that is unfortunately getting larger. And so hopefully, we'll be able to task that. Today, I think we, we took a step closer to that, thanks to a motion by Councilor Ressi. But hopefully, these conversations will continue and we'll see some action on the issue.
Thanks, Councilor Thieson. Councilor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Lots of coffee meetings, fairly, fairly busy two weeks. But my highlight was, I want to throw a thank you to Caitlin Crowe from the Derek Taylor School for inviting to go and sit with the grade sixes. I had done it last year and, and, you know, it was a fun group. This, this group was very engaged. There was two classes, actually, and it was a lot of fun. Went into overtime even with some of the questions. And it even had a couple of kids get me in the hallway before I got out of the building. So it was, it was neat just to see the future leaders of tomorrow and the questions they're asking and, and just how inquisitive they are and actually how understanding they are of the, the three levels of government was, was mind-blowing for me. So it was a good group, it was lots of fun and something I look forward to doing again in the future.
Thanks, Councilor Plott. I will just report on a couple items where I represent council, that there weren't any other council members. Grand Prairie Regional College Board of Governors were having consultation with respect to the profile development for the new president of the college. As you may know, they're recruiting to fill Don Natchek's position and their hiring consultant was in town. And so there's myself and a number of the other community stakeholders that they invited to help sort of contribute to that position profile. I attended and presented at an event called Realty Glimpse Live. This is a local Realtor, Mark Street, who puts this on, I think, you know, sort of as a business opportunity for him, but to get information about issues affecting property owners out into the community. I presented on mill rates and the roles that they do or don't play in communities. And I have to say that I was stopped, I was completely surprised that about a week later, I was stopped in Earl's from somebody who said they watched the entire hour-long presentation and said that they were really appreciative because they totally understood mill rates. And I was absolutely blown away, first off, that somebody who wasn't there in attendance getting lunch, watched the entire thing. So I was, I really appreciated the fact to hear that at least one person out there increased their knowledge by being able to watch that. And so thanks very much to Mark Street for offering that opportunity in that forum. I participated in a day-long Municipal Governance Committee meeting via teleconference here at City Hall. On Saturday, the 13th, I celebrated the 100th anniversary of the Salvation Army in Grand Prairie and joined them in their gala evening as they recognized that 1919, actually, April of 1919 was when the Salvation Army first started up operations in Grand Prairie and was pleased to join with them in their community celebration for that. And I also wanted to highlight that I was able to attend the 2019 Good Friday Service at Revolution Place. This is the second year, I believe, that this has been held at Revolution Place. Second year at Revolution Place. And this is, this year, the event has grown so much that they actually moved having two sessions. They had a morning session, an earlier morning session and a late morning session. It was great to see so many of our different churches participating together to host this community-wide event and a really great success recognizing the start of the Easter weekend. And with that, I will call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.